There are not any departments at your except you.
It's my day.
When?
Um. So to start with the superintendent job, I do, I know there's been questions, but I do intend to post that at the end of this month. That budget is a little tight, so it saved us a couple bucks on this end. I hope to get somebody on board in early June. Paving started today. I saw them this morning. They were down on the south side and then when I went out, they were on the north side. So they're getting there. Uh, speaking about DPW, uh, I really gotta, uh, compliment Nate and his crew. They're down about a guy and a half, two guys. Um, they did a great job putting a water valve out front, uh, for town hall and they're still, they're still trucking through all of the little projects that we're just kinda sitting there. Uh, getting manholes done. Um, they moved Mr. Eaton today. Um, all the cleaning and things have just been kinda sitting there. They're on it and he's, he's doing a wonderful job.
Are you gonna get the curb and put in all your 40 page?
The state is gonna reset curb. I have an email from them about that.
Before, though, I mean that would.
Yeah. I'll reach out to Mikey just to make sure.
They're putting the top coat on tomorrow.
Yeah.
We've heard them.
Um.
Done before.
I didn't get a chance to look for the, look at the Legion parking lot issue, but I'll get to it. Um. Just wanted to let everybody know it did come up last time. Uh, Mechanic Street, they're back there working. They've replaced a big stretch of road, uh, sidewalk. They raised it up to keep that puddle from forming right there at the gentleman driveway. And they'll be back, they'll be done in two weeks and they're gonna install two, uh, drainage. Or what you call them. Uh, they're kinda like a dry well. As water seeps, it goes in, it seeps out. Um, to make that less muddy. Uh, what, the wetland delineation was done at the airport for the salt shed project. We're waiting here back from now. Um. Oh, and so here's a crazy idea of the week. Um, would anybody be interested in, um, looking into turning the air park into a campground or a small campground? As a way to generate revenue. I don't know if you're interested, but I thought I would, uh, poke around if you go.
I, I'm, I'm all for anytime you make, you can make revenue, but my, my only thought is air park, but I mean, if I, if you could put a group together and let them come back, they might have an idea that they can make, generate some revenue with something as well, uh, uh, camping or, or something else even. That's one of, of anything.
Yeah.
If you do that, what's going to happen to the fires?
We would take the whole park, I don't think. That wasn't the intent. It was just something on the far north side and they camp out there anyway. During the summer.
The fires.
Yeah, they bring in their vehicles. But I didn't wanna put a lot of effort into it if it was something that.
No.
Okay, just. All I hear, I, I'm, you know, my people have gone up there for a hundred years and just recreated and then they found it and they've shot and stuff like that. So that sounds like that would be restricted, but I'd like to hear what you got to offer.
Sure. We'll, we'll pull some information.
No, no hookups.
No, no hookups. It would just be primitive camping using the toilets that are there. Yeah, and that's all I got for you today. It's been, uh, relatively quiet.
I, I have a question for you.
You.
Why wasn't our streets milled when the machine was here?
Uh, the streets were not milled because there's no money in the budget to do any of our work.
No, I was told, they said we had to wait for the, for the July and now we're gonna have to pay to have that equipment move back in.
There's.
That's gonna be an expense. That's gonna be close. That'd be over 2,500 bucks to let the equipment back in.
There, so the paving company put in a bid and that bid is, they're gonna have to stick to that bid.
But the, the deal was, we're gonna have it milled when that machine was in here doing the state. That's what we all talked about. And now we're gonna have to pay the green machine back in.
If the DPW budget would not have been.
We didn't have to pay them until July.
We do have to pay them.
The, you know, we went on, I know this, ever since we started a different accountant, this is all, we used to do this for years and years and years. And why all of a sudden it's so legal is beyond me. It just, I mean, it's gonna cost us money now. We just should, the roads would be smoother if we'd had them milled than what they are right now.
Well, it, it won't cost, the concern is additional funds. It won't cost additional money.
We'll see. They're not gonna move equipment for nothing.
And my understanding where, where the game plan is to.
But the deal was, Bob, that's why we got a good reasonable deal during the mill when the machine was here. So they didn't have to move it. And that was, that was the plan. That was what we agreed on.
That's all I got.
Yep.
I'll manage to report communications. Got any, there?
Well. Well, we had a, a few complaints last week, but, um, one young lady sewer was plugged. But it's, she wanted us to fix it, but it wasn't our, it wasn't our line. Uh, somebody wanted me to reach out to the state for them, which I did. Um, never could hear back, never did hear back. Um, and the young lady at Town Highway 63, she, she said she was gonna come tonight, but she is not here yet.
What's her gripe? I don't understand. That's a town road. What's her gripe?
There, she has many complaints.
But I mean, just, I know I read part of it where, I guess it was on, on text message or something, but she has no sale of that road, none whatsoever. And she's complaining because an oil truck is going up the, up the hill. It's a town road. I don't understand. I, I mean, it's, I don't know what else she's got for complaints, but I mean, even, I think one of them was a manhole or something. The manhole is there and it works.
Yes. She was saying that a neighbor was plowing and did damage to her driveway and she just.
And that's why she talks to the neighbor, not us. That's not our responsibility. I mean, I just, uh, I just think we have to waste a lot of time with something that really isn't our problem. I mean, I understand, you have to understand and you have to listen to them, but I think if you just talk flat out, you know, that's not your road. It's a town road. If you got a problem with a person plowing, then you go talk to the guy that was doing the plowing. That's not. If we'd have gone up there with a, with our plow truck and tore their road up or tore their lineup, that'd have been a different story. But we weren't the ones that did it. I plowed that road for years up there. So.
And what were the problems either?
I can wait. I'll, well, I'll bring up an answer since we're talking about that thing. Never mind. I'll wait and do it in roundtable because it's more of a roundtable.
Uh, just, just one more. So the game plan, just so that I'm clear, is to reopen the town office before our next board meeting, right? On the 20?
Monday.
I can't see. The 26th.
The 26th, Wednesday?
Nope, you're looking at.
Go up.
No, May's gone.
I, I don't have.
It's the 26th. It's Tuesday, the 26th.
Tuesday, the 26th? And that's going to be people, the door won't be locked anymore. People will be coming in with masks. Don't need to make an appointment. I'm, I'm just, are we gonna put something, communicate something with, saying, this is the new procedure effective the 26th?
Yeah, so there, there's already something on the door saying, you know, wear your mask, stay separated, but we're gonna reiterate that. Um, we're gonna ask people to stay separated six feet. Wear your mask when you come in. Um, and we're only gonna let one person do title searches. One person in the actual office at a time. So that way it limits the, uh, uh, exposure. But as Governor Scott started to open other things up and retail was opening up, I didn't see a reason to keep town hall closed. We're, we're more of an essential service, I think, than like J.C. Penney's.
Right. He opened up campgrounds, so they do.
Yeah, so.
For good monitors.
For good monitors, right. It's time to get back to work, so.
Not happy about it.
No.
Anything else for the TM? Okay, so local, local auction tax.
Your packet. Had the, some language, the draft language for the local auction tax. Um, what this, what this boils down to is the town would have a, um, a charter of one, one subsection allowing Board of Selectmen to, uh, have a local auction tax. Uh, at the election, on election day, there'll be two articles. Um, one saying, one asking people, can the Board of Selectmen adopt this, uh, charter? And Article 2 will then say, can we implement the local option tax?
You should put there for the sewer bond debt, not just the bond debt.
I, I actually, I actually had a note here, Jay, about that. Um, Colchester, so I, when I reached out, I reached out to Killington, Colchester and Williston to see how they do it. There weren't any towns that were similar to, to Fairhaven in terms of their economy and, you know, locals. Um, they were as close as I could find. Um, in Colchester, in their language, um, they said, they said, um, payoff, that was paid debt or voter approved projects. So you could actually put a list of projects and let the voters choose how to spend the money, which is the same thing.
But the reason we're doing this is for the sewer bond.
Yes.
And I think, and I think that's why the last time, was one of the reasons why it went down, because they thought we were just gonna tax it and use this money and. Hmm. I mean, the reason we talked about this 1% is strictly pay down the sewer bond. And I think that, I feel that that should be in there as pay down a sewer bond.
I'm, I agree with you.
I, I just.
Anything that would help clarity, when I read this, because I, I agree with that too, but I, I looked at this sheet and I'm saying, you know, I like everything that's sitting here. Is this, is this something that can, when the minutes come out? I, I think there's nothing that, that's, that everyone shouldn't have the ability to read and maybe the wording will help them understand. At least it'll make the conversation when we have the public hearings. I'd rather have people talking now and, you know, I don't know what other thoughts are.
But I think everything else in here is fine. I just feel, I just feel that they should say sewer, right way. I think that clarifies a lot of the, a lot of the reasons for having this tax. You know, I mean, you wanna say, so we don't have to put so much on your property taxes, but I don't wanna see that. I just, let's keep it simple for the option tax and, and just have it shows for as much pay to sewer.
Sewer bond. So I could edit the last, that, you know, last one to say revenues to pay down sewer bond debt.
Yeah.
That, that's my feel.
Yeah, because it does, it does clarify and clear.
Clarifies it.
Nice, yeah.
Let's do that with a motion.
I'll make a motion on, on the statement on Article 2 where it says pay down bond debt, that we put it in as pay down sewer bond debt. Give her a second.
One second.
Any other discussion? One thing I will say is there's a potential to have a split vote here. This is how, this is how people that are specialists think.
Uh huh.
There, the, the potential is to.
Okay, the charter, okay, the charter, not the bond or the bond and not the charter.
Right, and if they don't okay the charter, then we can't have the bond.
And, but the, the attorney said we couldn't put them together. They had to be separate.
They have to be separate, yeah.
Yeah, good. I, I, I agree with that. I'd love to have all in one shot, but I'm going, all the more important.
One of the things we can do, never call the committee and say, look, we can, we can have, you can have this 1% option tax or you can put 3% on your taxes for the next 30 years.
Yeah.
You know, this tax, not only town payers, but everybody that comes into town is gonna pay for it. It's not gonna be the burden on just us. And like I said, a hundred dollars, you're talking a dog. I mean, I know it's a tax. A lot of people don't wanna see a tax, but I don't wanna see my.
When I looked at the sewer budget, whether without, it was eye opening.
I'm always happy to see a refund. About that application for a tax. Make, make, you know, just make. Make a choice. You want it this way, you wanna pay more tax. It's a tax no matter where we go. Um, your, the property taxes, they go up every year no matter what. If they can then do a reassessment of their property, they're gonna go up even more. So. Now that's, that's. And that's, we're not gonna act in three years, right?
Yeah.
I don't know about that. We're, well, that's a different argument. Um, everybody understand what we're voting on? Jeff, you got that?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I guess that's the good idea.
And support, did, uh, did everybody see the timeline for that, for the November election?
Yeah.
The school is gonna have a, a vote, but they're looking at June and we don't have the timeline to.
And I think it gives us, it gives us time to talk with folks about, uh, the fact that it was a close vote. And the reason we're coming back and asking again is not that we didn't hear the first one, but we wanted to make sure people were making informed decisions, whatever that is.
And, and I'll, something like Wayne put together for the sewer bond vote with the, just the time and the information and the dollars and, and the figures and that. I'm gonna put something like that together and kinda do a, a public outreach like we did before.
Yeah, that, that would be good.
Wait. Uh, thirty minutes and, oh, wait.
Yeah, so this is the same plan as last time. We just had to edit out the DPW superintendent.
On, the only thing I saw after I looked at it, I should have sent it, send it, is my email address on the contacts. G, GT, the T is missing, the G trad A695, so if we could just.
I'll make a change.
Make that. The other, is this planned July 1 to July 1? Or is, what, what is the, the reason I asked the question is when I saw the, uh, I think the, the contact for, uh, there was, uh, for the high school, uh, had, uh, we have a new principal that's gonna be starting at Jason Roscoe there. And I said, uh, they had just hired a new, new principal to take Jason's job. I, I thought he finished it in June, Jason was gonna go. And, and I didn't know if it was a July, if this emergency plan is from July 1 to July 1, you might need the new principal's name. And I, I went looking to try to find, cause I, I was, uh, couldn't remember the name of the new principal.
He's a principal from Castle Village.
Right.
Yeah. No, I think this is actually.
Is it a June 1? If it's June 1, you're, Jason, I think it was gonna go to the end of the school year. So I think we're, we're okay then. But now we're getting comments on that.
Yeah, but if we're putting this in for next year, we're gonna want the new principal's name on it. He's not gonna be there.
I can make, I mean, I can make the edit.
I went looking for the name and I.
I didn't know.
On the website.
Yeah, just, just change it.
You just. As long as you have the position, we can get the name. But that was, that was the only comment I had on the document.
Make a motion to accept this.
I'm, I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, local emergency management plan with the edits.
Give her a second. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Don't leave me hanging out there.
Not as Johnny heard from. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, um, in business, is the, uh, replenishment street. No wrong measure.
Um, DPW, I, I, I think it was Jim. I can, I can double check into that, though. Don't quote me.
Two questions came to mind when I read this. It's annoying. This is pretty much all new to me. I'm saying, my first one was, what's, what's our normal practice procedure and stuff like? If, if someone paid to have something done, it wasn't done correctly and we fixed it, I'm going, so why are we giving them money back? They got what they paid for. They didn't get it the first time. I get it, but they got what they paid for.
No, they didn't get what they paid for.
Okay, then.
As far as I'm sure, I, uh.
All right, because I just, I just wanna make sure we're treating the, the Eaton's the same as if this happened, if this is no attempt, but if this happens to anybody, regardless who you are, would we give them back the 250?
I, if, if I, I would feel better myself if, if we did some gesture and that 250 isn't gonna kill us and.
It was, is, but that was the cost of putting it in there?
That's what we charge, yeah.
So, so in fact, it's.
To move the.
Well, what did it cost us?
I don't think it cost us anything.
How'd you move the vault?
Uh, the guy had come up and, and dragged it. Whoever the vault, the guy that installs the vault, he'll come over, pick it up, move it.
He's gonna tell the.
That's a pretty traumatic thing for a family to go through.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is, many times, this is Jim's thing. He's always saying, if we have a mistake like this, I think it's, there's a, something wrong. I mean, that's, that's a pretty bad mistake.
Yeah.
Like you said, that's, I'm gonna have the family go and find out you buried your wrong place.
But, and I have no problem with 250, just I'm saying is going forward, anytime there's a mistake, we're gonna refund the money. That's, that, that's the way, that's the way it sounds.
That doesn't happen often.
Yeah.
Did it, we, we did it a while back and I can't remember who it was, but it was somebody from the prominent family and we put them, put the person in the complete wrong plot. Well, they, they, they had to have the ceremony at the wrong plot. And then, you know, so, so it has happened. It does.
Okay, so, and that answers my question of, we normally would, if there was a mistake that we make, we give them back the money and we fix it. And, and if we say, and if we say that's what we've done, I have no problem.
Not much money. I think it's the gesture.
Yeah, this is mostly.
Yeah.
Okay.
So once can I take a motion for that, Mike?
I see how I, I found the fault. I'll say, I'll make a motion that, uh, we, uh, accept the recommendation that we refund the $250 to the family for our mistake that we made in the, uh, marking the, the plot and being off by one and a half feet.
Give her a second.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Are those the total fees that we charged for that?
Yes, that's it.
Yep. Okay, all right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Go to post. Done. And if we could send them our apologies.
I will. Did talk to Jack and apologize.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
I talked to Jayzor several times. Okay, fuel tank installation, moving there.
So this is to close the 10,000 gallon tank right here at town hall as part of the, um, town hall refurbishment. We received seven bids for the fuel tank closure, but we only received two bids for the install. We did ask for two options for install. One was 4,000 gallons outside and then 2,000 gallons inside, just to see what those prices would look like.
Um, 1,300 gallons in these.
Or, I'm sorry, 1,300 gallons.
Is it underground tank? Is it a double wall tank?
The outside tank?
Yeah.
That's above ground. Um, so talking to the people that bid on the installation, they were uncomfortable with a 4,000 gallon above ground tank. And when I talked to a few people, they said, I'm not gonna bid on this because of that. They recommended an in-ground tank of 2,000, 2,000 gallon in-ground. Um, they said that would be much cheaper, um, and much, and significantly safer.
I'm more worried about the fact that you'd have to buy 1,000 to 2,000 gallons of kerosene to cut it, to be out there all winter.
That, that came up. It's, if it's buried, you don't have to, uh, add, you don't have to put added into it.
Where, where this fact come from? I didn't realize that was, I didn't, I just, I missed that.
Yeah, um, I pulled some, some language off from online and then talked to the state about it.
Well, if you got a hole in the ground anyways, why don't you just put a 2,000 gallon tank back in the hole?
That was, uh, that was a suggestion. Let's, let's put the tank in the tank. So it would.
Pull this tank out. If, if the 2,000 gallon tank is a double wall tank, pull the tank out and have Fabian be pulled. And if they don't have to do any, any, uh, if they don't have to pull any dirt out to have it removed because of, of any spillage, just put a 2,000 gallon tank back in the ground.
Well, we're, it's being closed in place, but they can still set that, a new tank inside the tank. Inside the old tank.
They're not actually pulling the tank.
It's.
Either way, same thing, same difference.
Yeah. And we have to go through the, who, who does the inspection of that? The state must, must be the state, right?
Inspect the install?
No, the, taking the old, we're looking at the old thing so that there's no.
Yeah, the state will inspect. Um, whoever does this project, they're gonna scrub it, they're gonna drill holes and they're gonna take soil samples. And then they're gonna report back to the state on it.
Well then.
So did you, did you actually get bids, Joe, or no?
I'm sorry, Jeff?
Did you actually get bids?
Yes. Oh, Jeff, I'm sorry. I didn't send that. Yes, I got bids.
Okay.
I didn't send the, uh, the document to you.
No big deal. Don't read them out.
Well, my question is, are they valid if we're gonna?
Yes.
So this is the removal, so that they'll have a, whatever that Fabian looks like the winner there, but no prejudice.
So what I would recommend, if for what it's worth, is to choose somebody to close it and then we'll rebid an install for a 2,000 gallon tank and, and drop it in, drop it in right there.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to use the same contractor in the same bid?
Yeah. That's what I was gonna ask you. Are these bids valid and like, will you get Fabian and some of these other people to, uh, to bid on, on the, uh, 2,000 gallon tank in ground?
Does Fabian install? Just to use them, so I don't know if they install or not, but there are only a certain number of companies that pull tanks and a certain number of companies that install tanks. They're two separate permits and not everybody does both things. So that's why we did two RFPs. If we just do one RFP, it will limit, um, the number of companies that can actually do the work.
Well, this is kind of your bailiwick.
How good of a piece for it? I don't know.
I don't, I thought you were gonna pull that tank out and get rid of it. That's what I thought. I mean, it's not gonna cost $28,000 for a 2,000 to bid on tanking. No, especially in ground. I mean, if all the stuff you would have to do for above ground, if for a pad, you have to have a, uh. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta have a confinement. I say you don't put enough, you don't put 4,000 gallons above ground. But, I mean, I'd rather see the 1,300 gallons in the basement and, and put 4,000 gallons outside.
Above ground.
Just as Jeff said, then you gotta cut it. You gotta either use kerosene or you gotta cut it in half and, and that's even more expensive. Uh, I mean, if you have them in a cellar, you're gonna have, never have to worry about diluting the field.
You, you were saying, Joe, on your recommendation that act on the closure, but 1,300 gallons in the basement is, didn't, isn't really enough and you'd like to rebid it for. but 1,300 gallons in the basement is, isn't really enough and you'd like to rebid it for 2,000? I just tried, just wanted to try to understand what the recommendation is.
Yeah, the, the 1,300 gallons, just, we're going to have that fuel truck here, he'll be here every couple of weeks, and it seems like that's going to be a huge cost.
Why don't you just, why, it sounds like you should just rebid the whole thing and do it, do it both ways, the way, the way you want, and if you can find contractors that want to do both, they can bid it that way as well. Right, with all the changes you want.
Rebid with the 2,000 in ground? Plus the 1,300?
Well, it sounds like Joe really wants to rebid to 2,000 gallons in the basement anyway, so rebid that.
Yes.
Sorry.
And look for a contractor that'll do both the insta, the removal and the install.
So, Jeff, the, the trouble with getting just one company to do it is that only a couple of companies do both installing and removal.
Well, if, if people want to bid on, you can word your RFP and just bid it, uh, you know, if they want to bid on just the removal or just the install, you can word it that way. But I would just release one new RFP.
I would ask Fabian if they put a 2,000 gallon tank in.
Agreed, that's the simplest.
They're the cheapest, and, and I don't believe there's any hassle, if they can get a, they can get a double wall 2,000 gallon tank. And if they're right here with a hole open, uh, I'm not for setting it inside the other tank, I'd rather see them dig a hole beside it and put it in. But, uh, I'm sure Fabian can put a 2,000 gallon tank in.
Okay, now you got me confused. So, are we doing the 13?
Reach, reach out to Fabian first. If, if they're apparent low bid, right? I don't know the numbers, I don't.
They're apparent, yeah, they're the low bid for the.
Low bid on the closure.
So, just say, "We'd, we'd really like to work with you and we want to put a tank back in the ground, what would the price be?"
Do they install?
Yeah, I don't see why you'd want these, there's other ones in, in ground, I mean.
So, that would negate all this other side?
Yeah, that would, and the board has the option to not follow the bid process, but.
But, but isn't.
You've got to talk with Fabian before we can throw all this other stuff out.
Why don't you?
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
My, my question is, there's got to be rules around bidding stuff out. Can we go to Fabian without bidding it out, a new 2,000, and say, "Mr. Fabian, we want to make you a deal," even though it would be a good deal? To me, if I was one of these other people who bid, "You got to let me have a chance in an open bid process, what are you doing?" And, and if you're saying, "Well, it's because Fabian's going to do both, I'm simply never gave me an opportunity to bid on that." I, I, are we following the bid price?
I agree with it.
I'd be worried that we get ourselves in trouble.
It should be rebid, because it's a lot, it's going to be a lot of money. It's not too difficult.
And I would say, accept the fuel, the tank closure.
From Fabian.
And, the bid of, bid on for a 2,000 gallon tank in the ground.
Yep, and let's see what we get.
What is this, just out of curiosity, I don't remember what the tank you're taking out, was that 2,000?
No, that's 10,000.
10,000?
Yeah, it was a big tank.
Yeah, yeah.
Seems, seems crazy though to bid them separately. I mean, there's no way that it's not cheaper to have one guy move one piece of equipment in and do the whole job.
And, and what was on the sheet there, you're not looking at though, Jeff, was it looked like Murray Masterson and Masterson and Com Tank are the only ones who bid on installation of the 1,300 or 4,000 gallon. Fabian didn't bid on that, and, and Murray Masterson was about in the middle of the pack with, with their bid for the closure, and Com Tank was the most expensive.
Okay.
What's, and you're going to, you, I would think you'd want to really make sure that these two projects are done pretty closely together, because you're not going to have any heat waste if you don't. You know it's summertime.
Absolutely.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept Fabian's tank closure for $11,925.
And I'll second that.
Any other discussion of that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to have a motion to rebid the fuel tank installation for a 2,000 gallon tank in ground.
I'll second.
Hey, what's our total fuel usage for the year?
Um, there was 3,200 when I dipped it two months ago, so what is that, 6,800 gallons?
7,000, so.
Yeah, just about.
Anybody have a problem with bidding it out for like a 3,000 as well? Then you could fill up like presumably maybe twice on an easy winner?
I just think, you're, I think what's going to happen.
Are you getting too big?
The bigger you go, I think the more red tape you're going to have to go through.
Okay, alright, well, let's try it at two and two.
I would just, I would just say, if you get a double, no matter what tank you put in, get a double wall, then we're protected forever.
I think legally you have to now.
Yeah, I think you do now. If, I mean, maybe you can't have it, maybe they don't make the 2,000. See what's the next size tank is, if you can put them in the ground without a lot of hassle. If we put a 25,000 gallon tank in, fine. But I think the higher you go, the more red tape you're going to go through.
Alright, we got a motion on the floor? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
And just to rebid the installation.
Should we, should we hold up on the decommission until we have a plan for the re, the reinstall?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to start moving earth until we know exactly what we're getting and where it's going.
Okay, just as long as you convey that to Fabian.
Yeah. With these, uh, so these folks, the folks that bid, they've already been here and they've seen this place, we can, we can expedite this RFP, drop it out, and those who are interested know about it already.
But you may see Fabian bidding on it, and they might get a cheaper bid because of the fact he's here.
Hope so.
So, we're going first. Pete's on vacation and Tom had a prior commitment, so he has no.
Let's just go down, go down the line like we've done. Anybody's got anything? I'm on sewer, I'm 5,300 administration. Questions?
I don't hear any questions, I'm moving on.
Hang on. Show me where you are. I've got the, what'd you said, 63?
5,300 is.
Oh, the line number, okay.
Can Joe give us an overview, not specifically on this line item, but on what he's planning in here for salary?
Yeah, so in the, in the email I sent out with this budget packet, um, the, the sewer fund looks good. There are a few changes that I would, I would like to request, but, um, the most significant is a request of 58,000 for one more employee. Uh, as you see, we, we've been struggling to find somebody to replace Peter. Um, the other gentleman, uh, he's been talking about retirement, the assistant operator. And while we did find somebody to fill, uh, to hopefully step into Pete's position, um, unless we hire somebody and start training and pumping people through the system, we're going to be fighting with, with this labor shortage for at least three years. So, the request is 58, uh, 58,000 for one extra person to cross-train, uh, for the rest of the year.
Which, why is it 58,000 for a training?
That's, so that's $40,000 for the person, and then the 18 is for a family plan insurance. Yeah, and that might, insurance might go down depending on person, but.
What happened to the money we put in there to train the last guy?
That's been, that's been removed from this budget.
Where was there, you want four people at the sewer plant now?
Three.
We got three there now.
We have two in, two in one day, two people in one day.
And you're losing Peter in game, just June, June, 9:30 relation.
My.
Replacing Peter with someone else and his salary's already in.
Yes.
My concern when I first looked at that.
And are we going to pay the new person the same money with Peter?
No.
Now, $40,000, we're not.
But, it's, I think, I, I agree that, that you don't want to have this round robin of constantly training, but when I look at this year and I think how tight, not only our budget, but when I think of that, with the tax, school taxes and everything else, our timing to fix the problem and put the additional person, a little nervous, this, this is not the time I want to commit to another, another person.
But I, it's not fair to the town to put school taxes into the consideration.
Then let me take them out again. I believe we added a head and a half last year. I'm not interested in supporting my taxes for another head in municipal government this year.
Oh.
Well, and I know my head and a half, I'm probably a little off, but when I say that the halftime, I'm thinking halftime for the cemetery, and when we move Bud, the Department of Works, Public Works, and, and then when you start looking.
Separate funds.
I, I, I understand, I still see municipal government growing in 2020, and I'm not, I'm a little concerned of growing. Because we're going to replace DBW, we are replacing Peter with the lady. So, to me, that's, that's growing if you add another person.
It, so it would add one additional person, but it's prepping for, just like we did with Pete, we tried to get somebody on board to, to train, to take the position. There would be overlap, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a forever additional person, it would just be that person would be around for an extra year.
Do you have a date when this next person is going to retire?
About a year from July.
So, it's going to be, it's just a backfill until you get everybody trained. There won't be an increase in employees, it'll be a temporary increase.
What?
Aye. Again, as a taxpayer, I'm, I'm looking, every time I say, "And we're going to increase," that means it's going to be a lot tougher for us to put a budget together. And I, I look at sewer, for example, in our new sewer plant, we're doing all kinds of new stuff, where you, and it should be technology, where you can do things from home and different things, I'm not, if, 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 yeah, I'm not.
Yeah. I just, I'm just asking questions.
No, no.
So, the fellow that we talked to today, Tom, this chart is helpful to me, but it'd be nice if it had last names, so I know who they are. Um, I mean, he mentioned that he's thinking about retiring. Is there any way to, or would it be beneficial to, are these jobs so different that you can hire a person and train them ready for the next vacancy, but they might not want that position because they want to work in? Hire someone to work under the Department of Public Works temporarily till the next vacancy? So, you have them up and ready to go? But are the jobs too different that you wouldn't be able to find somebody that would be interested in that sort of thing? I mean, it's, it's a cost savings to be able to have someone ready to go, and it sounds like you have a few people that are thinking about leaving. But is it so specific that you have to hire for that next vacancy? Do you know what I'm saying?
And I think it is, it's, I know it is.
The water and sewer are different, like.
Mm-hmm, the different credentials. I, I'm, no, I'm just, I looked and said, "We had this great plan last year to have a six-month overlap with Peter," which basically.
It bombed.
It bombed. And, and it was, and this was Peter with the credential in here. It sounds like the person we're bringing in, the person that's leaving, is that a person with a credential that's here, or is a person with a credential somewhere here? So, it's going to be a shorter, it's not going to be six months. If we had to go to the street, that person told us, for us to bring a person in and carry him for a full year, for someone who's not going to retire for a year and a half, I'm saying it's great when you can do that. It's a luxury, I don't believe we can afford as taxpayers in the town, fair enough.
But if you're always having a vacancy rate, you always have a vacancy, you're not paying that salary. And you do this for a period of time, I don't know. I mean, I'm used to much bigger groups of employees, but if you're saving on, so like right now, like you just said, the, the department chair for public works, that salary isn't being paid. If there's always a vacancy, can that be shifted towards a new person, so you're never caught behind, behind? Or can you survive when you're, when people leave and you have to wait six months to fill it? Is that okay? I mean, I, I don't know.
What happens then?
I see, we cut it in half and do a six-month training session.
Whatever, you get, you wait too long, and then we'll find somebody, you put a huge stress on the others.
On the others, yeah.
Tom, Tom North, uh, Donovan is a perfect example.
Yeah.
He, he needed a year by himself for all that.
Without a day off?
Without a day off.
That's why I'm talking about trying to hire a head for vacancies, while you're saving money on vacancies, because in the end, you could.
But you're not going to have a vacancy until another per year and a half.
Maybe.
And, but we're talking, the reason we're doing this is because the guy's talking about retiring. He's talking about retiring in a year from now. So, do a half a year, do six months instead of putting 58,000, put 30,000 in. And, and go, well, that, you're not going to pay somebody top dollar to come in here and train.
Got you, Jeff.
Go ahead, Joe.
And what's the actual cost of the, uh, the management service?
The, so the ma, so SOS, we have a contract for them and their, their cost is going to be 30, 32,000. And that's for eight hours a week. We, we, like $78 an hour.
And that, that cost is in your 58,000?
No, that cost is already sitting in your budget, the 58 is additional funding.
Okay, so, what is the, what are those eight hours covering?
Those eight hours are only covering testing, pulling samples, doing some lab work.
Who did, who did that before? I think you've got some double coverage here.
No. No, see, but it's, it's easy to say, "Well, that covers Pete, so now we don't need that."
Oh, but it, it might cover half, half of Pete, or a quarter of Pete.
It doesn't cover, it covers eight hours of Pete, if we're lucky. Peter, Peter and Dale manage that plant, I mean, they're there, they're on the ground, they're working, they're, they're building, uh, pumps, they're pulling pumps, they're doing OSHA inspections, you know, just make sure the fire, fire extinguishers are marked. No, this.
Okay.
Contract, the contract with SOS is a huge strain on town resources. At $78 an hour, we could hire two Peets, or a Pete that's out.
So, how do you, what's your proposal, how long do I have to pay SOS?
One year.
Okay, there's no way.
That'll be gone.
But there's no way around that, we can't just hire somebody with a license.
Uh, there is nobody that wants to work here with a license. I've been trying for like nine months and it's.
There's a contract for a year, I mean, if somebody did show up, if you advertise, then we, 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 yeah. We're in a contract.
We can't.
At any time.
It's a 60-day, we have to let them know 60 days ahead of time.
But you're not, you're not going to actually advertise for anybody because you've already filled the position, right?
I have somebody that she has one-year experience, and she's, she is able to sit and take the test, but she won't be the official operator until she gets that two years in. Our existing staff isn't interested in filling that position.
Okay. And then we, we did talk about Aaron Kerber, was he interested at all?
Yep, so.
He might do, he might do eight hours a week for half this cost.
Sam did reach out, um, I didn't talk to him, no. It seemed, it seemed like a big ask for just. For just hey, I'll do you a favor. But I can, I can, I can personally reach out to Aaron.
I wasn't asking him to do me a favor. I was thinking, you know, forty, fifty bucks an hour helps us both.
Yeah. I'll give him a call.
It's just a thought. I, he may not be interested. I don't, I have no idea. Okay, so.
That'd be a lot cheaper than.
When you add, whether it's fifty-eight thousand or a half to the sewer budget that we have, cause I like this new sewer budget. It looks, it's, it, I really like the new sewer budget, straight where most budgets should be. But it's, is that gonna go up two and a half percent? Is it gonna go up ten percent? Do we, what, what, what is, what would putting the money you're asking for do, like, to the sewer budget?
So, it would, so for the, for the dollar amount, for your weekly or quarterly bill would add six cents to your sewer usage. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I've been.
But you wanna know the percentage of.
Well, well, I'm, I'm, again, I'm looking, when I, when I look at a budget, I'm saying, okay, here's how we operate here. It's nice to want things, but I expect that most budgets are gonna probably increase by two, two and a half percent each year. If it's no more than just benefits and, and on that line.
Oh, so your fifty, your fifty-eight is not in this budget at all?
That's right.
No, it's not.
I, and I wanted to know if it was in the budget, what, what's, what's the impact?
Percentage of that, five hundred and thirty-three?
Yeah.
One percent or something, one percent.
Well, you're saying it's gonna add two cents on the usage rate. Is that what you said?
It would add seven, six cents to the.
Alright, so we're down a dollar fifty-four right now, according to the budget, am I correct?
A dollar, let me look at it, Jim.
Can't, none of that.
Glenn, adding that would raise the increase to nine, a little over nine percent for the sewer budget.
It would make it above nine percent.
It would be.
And I look and I'm saying, boy, as we go into each department and everything, it's, it's nice to have a wish list, but, uh.
That's for the full fifty-eight?
That's for the full fifty-eight.
So if you cut that in half, it's four and a half. There's nothing else on here that can be trimmed to.
Um, you, we can trim, so as a place, as a placeholder, I put forty thousand in for the, for the contract, cause the guy didn't, we didn't know how much it was gonna be. So that's thirty-two now, so you can take. It, it's sitting on zero, two, five, six, three, nine, zero dash forty underwater treatment plant.
You put that on the water side or the sewer side?
No, I'm waste water, sorry, wastewater treatment plant, sorry, Jeff.
So I'm gonna go back to my original question. You said it was gonna go six cents on this, on the sewer user rate, correct?
Yes.
So instead of fourteen sixty-eight, it's gonna be fourteen seventy-four. Is that correct?
Using that so I don't get something wrong here.
It's adding six cents to fourteen sixty-eight.
Oh, yeah, and then if you're doing half, it's half of that, yes.
No, I'm saying, you're saying, you said six cents is gonna, what, the, the rate, the sewer use rate is gonna go up for this fifty-eight thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
So you're looking at six cents on that, it's gonna make it fourteen seventy-four instead of fourteen sixty-eight.
Yep.
And if it, it already gone down a dollar fifty-four.
I'm sorry, what was, what was the number that you just gave me? Fourteen?
Be fourteen seventy-four.
Yeah, I have seventy-five in rounding, but yeah.
I mean, you're looking at, if you're looking at six cents to do this fifty-eight thousand dollars. And we were down a little bit to begin with. Cause it says, it says we're down a dollar fifty-four, is that correct?
Yes.
It doesn't feel right in, in my head for it to be, for that much of an increase. It feels more like a, a ten percent change. Doesn't it?
Where's the dollar fifty-four?
That's on this, on this line here. So, my question is, why does it say? Thirteen, fourteen. Was that last year's?
No, last year's is fourteen sixty-eight, the thirteen fourteen is what your current sewer budget will get you.
Okay. Okay, so, alright, so it's gonna be thirteen twenty.
Right.
You could add that.
We put the six cents on it.
Okay.
I was adding it on, I was adding it on to last year's rate.
Yep.
So we're still less.
We're still gonna be doing less than.
Why is, why is that if we're going up nine or ten?
Okay, I put that in the wrong box. I lied to you.
No way.
Yeah, no, I was wrong. It's actually a dollar sixty-one. Yeah, that's more like it. Sorry, I put that in the wrong box. So, yeah, so I need an extra dollar sixty-one.
Fifty-three thousand, definitely two percent. Right? Something like that.
So you look, you, so if you cut up thirty thousand instead of fifty-eight thousand. Looking at eighty cents, right?
So it's thirty thousand. Thirteen ninety-seven.
That's still less than what we're paying this year.
I guess, too, you could reallocate some labor and cross-train between the two departments and have a water, a halftime water, halftime sewer, and get the same coverage, cross-training that you want to be ready to fill these positions with half a guy.
That's what I was trying to ask you before, yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to ask about last meeting, like, how can we reallocate labor so that it's more efficient? And maybe you can't, but I have to ask the question.
Since I've been here, we've been trying to cross-train DPW and other staff just to be able to do this. Nobody wants to do sewer. I got two guys that wanna work in the water plant, but the sewer plant, nobody wants to do it. It's just not a job that anybody is interested, you know? It's, it's remarkably difficult.
You say that, how, how do you hire? Yeah, I mean, are we, are we looking in the right places?
Labor is impossible to find.
How do you, how do you recruit for that?
For sewer?
Yeah.
I've put, and so ICMA is, uh, International City County Managers. They, you know, you can recruit all over the country for these positions. I've recruited all over the country for this. With only one hit from a guy from Louisiana and he never followed up.
That's a recruitment firm that looks for these positions specifically?
Oh, it's a job posting board.
It just feels like with so many people gonna be out of work that you could.
That there'll be somebody, there'll be someone looking for a job and this.
A local job that.
It, it's, it's, it's not a bad job if you do, you do it where we, the benefits for this particular job is pretty, pretty good.
Is there a pay difference between the two per hour? Like, is the job significantly different between the two pay-wise?
Yeah, um, yeah.
I understand.
About five dollars an hour.
For what? For the, more for the sewer?
To have the licensing, yeah.
Wait, wait, wait. So if I work in the sewer, I get five dollars more with that license because it costs me more to get it?
So, when you say when you work in the sewer, as opposed to where?
Water.
Water plant.
Oh, you mean, um, no, so that difference is not as significant. It's only like a buck and a half. I thought you meant between the different grades of license for sewer.
Uh, no, no, just wondering, why, why the, I, I understand that people don't like to work in the sewer because it's the sewer department, but other than that, there's no, there's no monetary reason they don't wanna work there. Right?
I.
You're asking if we, if we need to incentivize sewer over water?
Yeah, I guess to me, it's cheaper to pay existing people five dollars an hour more to work in the sewer if that, if that solves our problem.
It, I mean, it's, so, I don't know what that would look like, though. What does that look like? Does that take labor from somewhere else?
Uh, it just makes your pool, it's like Carol was talking about, so that when I have one vacancy, I can fill it from, I have one vacancy from five people rather than one vacancy from two people. Right, Carol, that's kind of the.
Yeah.
We're making it easier to cover from a bigger pool.
Try to do somewhat of a generic training so they'd be ready to go into either place.
So we would pay, say, one person to come in, or one person, we have more money to train, they're doing their job, but we're gonna pay them five bucks more to cross-train.
That wouldn't be an employee satisfier for the people that are here.
No, that would be a people reason.
Yeah, that, you can't do that, but. Yeah.
Right, there's, there's probably, yeah, I mean, if, I mean, you know what you want. I mean, my, my concern is we were, we were growing, but it's, uh, when, and when I looked at the org chart that was sitting there and I said, okay, I saw Jim under transfer station and Jim under sewer, and I said, it must be fifty percent of time in each place. And I take it that's the one who's gonna retire, or no?
No, so when I say there's a three-year span, yeah, Jim is talking about retiring in a couple of years. And then we have Dale is also talking about retiring in a year and a half, in a year, year and a half.
And Tom.
And then Tom's been talking about retirement since I got here.
No, I, I, I definitely agree with you, Joe, that we have a problem with, um, all of our employees aging out.
Right, they've been here for, doing a great job forever and we're all leaving at the same time.
It, it isn't. It's, it's impossible, Jeff. Well, you know, Jeff, these folks like Tom and Pete have been so committed and they have so much institutional knowledge that walking out the door in a month or a year and it, water and sewer run themselves because these folks are so good at it. And when we lose them, it's gonna be a, a whole new story. And I don't, personally, I was just bringing it back to my job, I don't wanna be the guy that loses this good talent and then things kinda go, you know, they circle drain. So I'm trying to kinda fend that off.
Yeah, which is, which is why I was hoping to have, um, some sort of management structure in place with, with, you know, one person that kind of oversaw both, so that it was, we were a little more flexible between the departments. And maybe it's not possible to do that. Maybe the licenses are way too different. But I was under the impression you could get one license that covered both, water and sewer.
No, two, two, two separate licenses. Though there are people like Aaron that do have both.
Right, that have both, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But not many, and not many.
I've had people call from New York and say, well, I'm gonna transfer my license, but then they don't, you know, you don't hear from people.
So if, if you put the fifty-eight in there and get what you, does our sewer base rate go down? Or stay flat? Or does it go up?
The, the base rate won't change.
Okay, that's a good.
It all depends how you allocate it, though, Glenn. I mean, you could, you're just gonna put the whole number on your usage rate, right?
You'd still, you'd still be paying, uh. I, I.
If the board would be more comfortable with six months, I mean, I would, and I apologize for bringing this up. I know it's, it's difficult question to answer, but.
That is a deal.
It, it is, uh, six months would be great.
No, I, my problem is it, it, I'm not sure it solves your problem. I'm worried that if, if the talent pool is so short that we can't find people, um, you know, maybe we need to rethink how we're, how we are looking for people, what we're paying, you know, job descriptions. I mean, there's something that's undesirable about our job if we only got two applicants.
Uh, you know, I, I don't think so, Jeff. It's, when you talk to, when you talk to folks, um, they'll tell you, even the state will tell you, people aren't getting into this profession. I, I don't think it's necessarily our job. I think it's, it's all jobs in sewer.
And no one wants to, uh, combine between towns into a, a leadership role and have like one, one guy for like Castle and Polton, Fairhaven.
Um, yeah, well, so we reached out to Castle Ten, whoever's running their sewer plant to see if they would help us out. And they just flat out said no. They didn't have time. They were doing more than one plant and they, they didn't have even an hour's spend on us.
Okay.
Ooh, this tough, man, I'm telling you.
Well, I, 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 I think that you just kinda have to do a little different kind of search. And I wonder, I wonder if, um, Wayne Elliott could help or could suggest some places to look.
He's, he's, he's a great help.
I mean, I, I, this is a blue collar job. It's not a, it's not an engineer's job. But it requires a lot of knowledge. And so whoever takes, you know, I did, get back to Neil's, Neil's suggestion of having a, a vocational training for that over, over Stafford. It's a great idea, but it's down the road ten years for us. It doesn't, it doesn't help us right now. Um, we just gotta find, we gotta go someplace else. There's got to be someplace, something. Or we, we have to really recruit, um, like, the guys we have now, you know, do they know somebody? Do they know somebody that might be, you know? Or do they want to do that? And if they want, if somebody wants to do that, then it might be worth it to pay them something to get their license. You know, so we have somebody with, with, you know, if we pay them for schooling and they, they take time to do that, then they gotta, they gotta sign on with us for a while.
That's, I was just thinking about that and, um, timing of the year isn't right. I think it's short-sighted not to be looking ahead for these things. But even recruiting at the high school, if you could find, get two or three people that were interested
Yeah.
and get them involved in some sort of work ahead while they're still in school. Um, get them, if they're interested and we're interested in them, get them to sign a contract that if you will pay for your schooling, within the next three years, you have retro payback on the percentage of time, that sort of thing. You might be able to capture some interest locally. And it'll take some time to do that, but it's a great way for kids that wanna stay around and, um, have an education.
It's less expensive than a line run.
Mm-hmm.
And you've got, um, somebody that's relatively loyal. I mean, that's how you.
That's the thing, to come here from Louisiana.
Yeah, yeah, like.
Probably not gonna help stay.
Neil Rods, that we do, uh, that they started a training program at Stafford. Like I said, that down the road, it was along the line that you're thinking.
We, we did, we did along that line, uh, Kim Ransom at the school, she was, uh, um, we were talking to her over the summer about interns. Um, and I reached out to her and said, if you know anybody graduating, let me know. We wanna bring somebody on and start training.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
That's, that's the dream, is to get somebody in and let them stick around.
And I'm surprised they don't do something like career day or something at the high school where you can take, or they aren't going to college or, or whatever reason, but they're saying, hey, look, let's give you an opportunity to come down and see what Department of Public Works, water treatment. That, what, what's available right here in town.
Yeah, if you get interns, um, you also get the added benefit of knowing if you would really want them to be here or not. Gives you the, uh, I don't think so.
So.
So we're gonna try thirty thousand? Is it, we're gonna try six months?
Thirty?
My suggestion. My suggestion.
Can you, and just put that in the new, so we can see what it looks like, Joe, for next time?
Right, I'd wanna, I'd wanna see the numbers before I said, yeah, let's go here because.
So I've, I've messed that sewer rate up three times now and I apologize. So thirty thousand would bring the new number up to thirteen dollars and ninety-seven cents, which is still.
Yeah, that's.
Still an increase?
It's, yeah, it's still a decrease in the sewer rate.
What did, uh, I guess, give us the highlights of what got cut then, Joe, to, that you can add sixty thousand to the budget?
Thirty thousand.
No, he's adding thirty thousand for the eight-hour.
Yeah, for, for the coverage for Peter plus another thirty thousand for the other, that's the, you get where my concern is. Does all these add up and before you know it, you're.
I'm feeling, I, I'm having flashbacks, Bob, to, uh, budgets passed and I, I'm thinking there's a cell added wrong in here. It's my problem, which is nothing, nothing against you, Joe, I just.
Oh, no, I, hey, man, I made my share of errors, no doubt.
It's traumatic stress, believe me.
Um, so if you look, if you're looking at the wastewater treatment,
Yep.
there was forty-three, forty-three thousand cut out of salary there. Um, that, that total is only up eight thousand.
You wanna add, you wanna add fifty-eight back in there, right?
No, down to thirty, thirty.
Thirty.
Okay, so plus thirty-two? Plus thirty.
Up thirty.
Yep, so that's.
Still be minus thirteen.
Minus fourteen.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and then under, under benefits, you're seeing a big, uh, decrease in benefits at sixteen thir-, uh, sixteen thousand, almost seventeen thousand dollars.
And that, that's still, that'll still be there when you hire that extra fif- thirty?
Absolutely.
Um.
I feel like I gotta add six thousand back.
I'm sorry?
I feel like I gotta add six thousand back in there.
So with thirty thousand, we'd be able to hire her part-time, but we'd still have to provide insurance. If, if we hired her full-time, we'd have to provide insurance, so that number would go up, yes.
So, but if you're hiring her to replace Pete, our money's already in there for Pete. Correct?
Yes.
So the only way we're gonna cover her is if, if Pete's getting done July one, then money's gonna be in her budget and you're gonna hire her to take his job. We're not gonna be paying her as much money.
I, I, I agree with Jay on that, but I'm, what I'm worried about is the extra thirty that we just put back in. Must have some benefits associated with it.
It will have to, right?
If we, if we hired her full-time, we would have to, yeah.
It would be full-time half-year.
Full, yeah, full-time half-year.
But after that, if the person doesn't retire and stays, we've committed to another full-time person plus the one who didn't retire and we went up.
One person.
But even the six months, don't I have to pay the full-time benefits for at least six?
Yeah, yes, we do.
Okay, so how much is that?
Oh, what did I say?
About twenty percent on top of the salary, I think.
We, we budget a family plan just in case, but it's eighteen thousand.
It was nine thousand, so it's thirty-nine thousand.
I'm gonna add nine thousand, right?
Right.
Okay, so that line item's down five thousand still.
That's correct.
Okay. What else you got?
I'm not gonna ask for anything else, I'm done.
Okay, 'cause I have the sewer budget being up six point two-nine percent now, thirty-three, a total of thirty-three thousand up.
How much did you add in yet?
I added thirty thousand. And I added the nine thousand down at the bottom.
So you added thirty-nine?
Wait, you gotta add the, the insurance.
Yeah.
Is that, is that total, total cost? I mean, you've got other benefits besides.
Did you say six point eight three or six point three eight?
Six point two-nine is what I'm at, but yeah.
Okay, I wrong, I wronged it, so it's, I got three eight, but close.
I'm using your sheet. I'm just plugging them in while I sit right here.
Yeah.
So that assumes that the, uh, the formulas are correct, but it looks good. But that, so what's thirty-three thousand? So that's almost forty thousand up on your, on your usage rate. What's that look like when you do the math on that?
With, with forty thousand, with forty thousand added to the budget, that brings your, your rate to fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents, which is still less than last year.
Than sixteen thirty. But how, how can it be less than last year when it's up?
Because it was, it started.
Forty-three thousand, that money we had near last year. That's part of.
Right now, Jeff, your sewer is down by a dollar fifty-four.
To start with.
Just, yeah, you're down by a dollar fifty-four to start.
Oh, okay, before you put thirty-nine back.
And you're not gonna be able to hire this person likely, uh, July first anyway, right? A few months are gonna go by.
Well, you couldn't, if you're only gonna do thirty thousand, why would I hire them? The person wasn't gonna, even tell us you're gonna retire for a year and a half. Why are we bringing them in before twenty-twenty-one? That's, that's, that's the reason, that's the reason in the conversation I'm saying, I think it's a good idea, but I don't know if I want to add anything until we talk about this budget next year this time.
You're gonna lose people.
Somebody's gonna retire in a year and a half. We're looking right now, we're looking at six months of training somebody from January until July of next year, am I correct? That's the thirty thousand.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna have, if somebody's, just another person, if somebody's in place, maybe he'll retire earlier. If, if, unless, depends on his time.
Even if he doesn't, then you're, you're only looking at six months.
You're still, you're still doing the knowledge transfer and you're, and you're, okay, yeah, I mean, I can.
But, yeah, I mean, you, I'm mostly better off, because gentlemen, this person wants to retire in a year and a half. If we put somebody out for six months and we're pretty sure they're gonna stay, we might even be able to buy that guy up cheaper than, than what the salary would be.
You might.
I mean, I just, I'm not saying we do, we do that, but I'm just saying that's a possibility. A lot of people will take early retirement if they get paid out, if they get, if they get buyout. So even if you looked at half his salary for six months to buy him out.
You know?
So what are you looking for to get the thirty thousand? Sounds like thirty thousand and nine thousand for the, then it's thirty-nine thousand.
I think we need to, I think we need to say it again.
Say it again.
In, in the next.
The, the next meeting, I'll bring the projector and we'll, we'll do it on, on the big screen.
There is no way that your sewer rate can be lower with, with an increase from last year. I, I don't, I just, I can't follow the math. There's no the nineteen-twenty budget, right, with five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We're thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand over that with these changes to five seventy-two.
Okay.
How, how are you projecting a sewer rate to go down? Are you using revenue that I'm not thinking about?
No.
Fourteen.
Why don't we wait until we get it on the screen?
All right.
It's gonna be a lot of you here to sit and look at it here on, everybody can see exactly what, I mean, you keep jumping through the budget during places. If it's on the screen, it can be highlighted so we can see exactly what it is and then it'll probably answer Jeff's question on why the budget can be down because of the savings that's been put into the budget.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff, do you have time sometime this week to sit down and look over the spreadsheets?
Absolutely.
All right, let's do that so that way I see, so I understand.
Well, I, I trust Jeff on the.
Hey, Jeff.
Yep.
Do you think that, is there any chance you might be able to attend in person the next time we go through this?
I will. I've been, I've been trying not to only because we have, my family has a lot of exposure, but I, I will come to the next meeting.
I think that would be good.
Yeah.
If you're comfortable.
And then with the, on the highlight on the wall here on the screen.
Yeah.
Everybody can see what's going on. And we can go down through to see, he can joke and point out exactly where the savings were and what the difference is in the, it just will make more sense if you can see everything in black and white.
Yep.
Even though it's right here in front of us, I keep skipping around to try to find where the numbers are changing.
Yep.
So does the board want me to add the thirty-nine?
No, no, I, I, go ahead and let's see what the numbers look like.
Then we can look at the numbers. Keep the sheet here.
Go out as fast as I can. No, go on one faster.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. But every, uh, just, everything else, I mean, besides the labor discussion that we just talked about, most things were flat funded, some things went down, um, well, anyway.
Yeah. And, uh, if, if the department has to move in next time.
Is, is there anything you want that on water? So if we send him back to redo some sewer, do we want to take a quick look at water in case there's a? Oh, okay.
No, 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 I mean, I, I think we, we probably, that's a valid question. We're a little ahead of schedule, but I. So.
Yeah, which is good.
Does any, does anybody have anything that stands out or shake, shakes them up about water?
What, I guess what's in the two and a quarter, that's all just salary, just regular increases?
Um, yeah, I mean, that's, it's salaries, um, there was, there was an increase in dues and meetings. Um, the big one, Jeff, came from machinery and equipment. Uh, Tom's been trying to get a, a lawnmower for two years now. His die. So I promised, I promised I would try to put a lawnmower in his budget for him.
We, we talked a couple of years ago about having the guys just, uh, you know, like when Joe mows the park, you could just run up there with the trip, cause he's running to the park to the airport. Can he just mow that too? In his rounds and then, uh, Tom wouldn't have to?
Yeah.
Tom's probably an expensive lawnmower.
I, I agree, um. So the reason I hesitate, Jeff, um, we have a few properties in town that we're now maintaining, the Billowitz Properties plus our, our one down here on Main Street. Um, we also tasked Joe with ma- making sure that the new restroom trailer was clean and he also does the park and he also helps DPW when they need an extra hand. We.
You think, like, he might be busy?
Well, we, the idea of having other staff do other staff's work is great. It sounds like it saves us money, but what happens is stuff just doesn't get done. Is, is what it just, it boils down to. And it's, we can ask him to do it, it's just something else won't get done. At least it won't be done in a timely manner.
That's a good answer, Joe, that's fine.
Basically, it looked like the water fun was about that two point four-six or two and a half percent increase. When I looked at it, I said, okay, uh, I could pick little things like, uh, the under-meters repair and maintenance. And I said, ah, fifteen hundred, I said, all brand new meters, we bought them all. They're working really good. Do we really need that much repair? But then I'm going, well, after listening to Tom today talking about the trouble he's having with the old meters that aren't out there and everything, I'm saying, ah, oh, okay, ah. It's not, fifteen hundred is not.
Not a lot of money to.
So it's all in all.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that particular line, so we're still gonna need reading equipment, whether it be a tablet or an antenna that goes on their car. So there's always gonna be those things, maybe some software that they need some help with. So there's, there's short money for that too.
Do I ask what kind of a lawnmower are you buying?
Uh, he went and talked to a gentleman up here in town and he's looking at his gag.
Twelve thousand dollars?
No, no, six thousand, six thousand dollars added to that. The, the rest of, the other six thousand was just his general machinery and equipment for, for the water, uh, water plant.
And whenever I see.
How much, question here, does he really need a, why can't you go to Tractor Supply and buy it, the same thing, the lawnmower, an international or something a little cheaper? I mean, why do we have to have a stack? It's probably one of the most expensive lawnmowers there is. And they break down just as quick as the rest of them, so. It's probably a decent one too, right?
I don't think so, no. I mean, maybe it is, but I, I don't think, Tom, Tom's not one to.
I think, I think we could check around other places.
Pretty sure, young.
Youngs. I mean, they actually do business locally, but come on, we're gonna look at, we're gonna look at.
Yeah, I know, but ask Dave to find us something.
Well, something different, Dave.
Something a little lesser, maybe not as big or, or something, you know?
Well, you might, Dave might have a used one sitting down there too.
There you go.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Have him go back down to Dave, have him go down to Dave before we finish this up and have him check to see if Dave has something, something other than, you know, Dave paid water and sewer, in most ways like.
We, uh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Under that same treatment facility, uh, where other purchase services, it's like saying miscellaneous when you put that there. When I saw that go from five thousand to seven thousand two hundred, I'm going, okay, what, what is it that?
Yep, so that's, um, you'll, you'll see this in, in sewer too. There's extra testing that the state's requiring us to do and, and that's a direct result of that.
Okay. For the most part, I thought it looked, looked pretty good. It felt like Tom said today about his brother. He said, you know, I, uh, I may even be able to come in under there. It was, it was great that he was honest enough to say that. I was saying, don't, don't, don't be telling me. Two, two and a half is, I'm gonna try and see, but, yeah.
Other things, we'll. All right, revisit this and we'll open these kinds.
Bring the projector and press button it up.
I agree with, and on the budget, but I don't think the water budget's that bad. I just want to check.
How, how, how much does the, does the rate increase on that?
Two and a half.
Two and a half? It was like two.
Like four.
Yeah. It was two point four-six, I think. I gotta get back.
You talking about, what about you, Jeff?
Water's up.
On your use.
Twenty-six cents.
Twenty-six cent.
Twenty-six cents, two point four-six.
Twenty-six cents, yeah.
Nelson, let us move along. Exstabilization, policy cap reserve, those are really bad burner at this point. We talked about. Adam Street is, you're looking.
Yeah, we're looking for funding options.
Um. Update personnel.
Right, anytime, we were waiting till we all got together so we put it on the screen, so that might be not the next meeting. Once we get budgets and things around, uh, we, and, yeah, I can finish that up. Once we get budgets and things around, uh, we, and yeah, I can finish that up.
And Lewis Lane, we're still waiting for the principals to show up. I think they're stuck in Florida. I haven't seen them anyway, but I haven't seen anybody, so. Um. Anybody got anything that they need to talk about there?
Well, on the on the project updates there, and maybe I, what would be helpful for me every time I try to get my mind around is a completion, a plan. I I like to feel there's a plan, I like to see a milestone chart that says, here's the project, like, like the lighting in the park. And and the best of all world, it doesn't even, we're not stopping at a whole, it starts here, it's done there. The salt shed, the salt shed starts here, it's done there. It actually, and across the top, it's it's the month, it's twenty twenty, it's twenty twenty one. But then in one sheet, I can see if we have ten projects, here's the ten projects. Here's when there's, when we we plan to have them start and end. And if they're not, it, let's just focus on what we need to focus on, if we need to do something, and leave the rest alone. But I just, I I need something that that helps me get get focused.
That's how I'm used to working, too.
Uh, so I I mean, that that's what, when I see the project updates, each time I keep going. Now, I tried, I'm not smart enough, I, or I'd send you a milestone, I I've got an engineering friend that I want to say, hey, can you send me, and here's what I want it to look like, and he'll do his magic with Excel spreadsheet and send it to me, but I haven't asked for that. Because I said, but that's helps me. When someone says, hey, how about the, uh, south end of the park, and the, uh, the the one way in the parking lot? What's what's the plan? Things change, this is where you start, this is what the plan was for completion, I would slide it.
I agree, I think. I've been asking for a calendar for DPW for one year.
Well, that that goes.
I have some examples, if you want, that I could bring in, that it's not really been a calendar, it's just project timeline, some might be two months, might be two years, where you are, planning stage, if you're spot on hold, if it's.
Just like.
With completion day.
What also would help with the new superintendent, Department of Public Works coming in, is standard work. There's things like painting the crosswalks, the sweeping, there's things that have to happen every year, around the same time every year. Boy, I'd love to see the standard work, so work comes in, you just think. And instead of figure out, because sometimes it's not their fault, they don't know what they don't know that needed to be done, I don't wanna find find fault with them. I just, but there ought to be some standards that we know has to happen all the time. But forget this. All on that, on that.
So that'd be everything in round.
Okay, uh, two items. And I, and one, it was more for, I had a person ask me about a question on dump stickers, so I wanna, no, don't shoot the messenger, but I wanna bring bring the message up, it says, that basically the question was.
I need a quote off.
When you, when you go to the transfer station, you can get everything but a dump sticker. Why can't you get a dump, why can't you purchase a dump sticker?
If you're writing a check.
If you if you're writing a check.
I agree.
And and I I sent out, uh, I sent an email, you know, cause I am, and and also talked to Jim, Doug Transfer Station, to try to gather some information around that, and I said, don't know the answer to that question, I don't even know what we've done.
I thought the reason that we didn't do it down there, uh, wasn't only for cash, it was because we wanted to link up the license plate. And have all that entered in Bev's database.
Well, it still could be, I mean, they just have to transfer that information to her.
Right, I I was trying to think in terms of even if it was proof of, cause what Jim told me was, hey, you know, you wanna make sure you have a taxpayer or someone from West Haven that's using it, I said, well, I can go get the DMV and get my license by just showing my address on a piece, piece of, uh, mailing that came to me, so that's not a, this is not rocket science figure out. Uh, what is there some other, some other, uh, reason or or? That's there, and I and I, and the reason I'm bringing it, and I got the answer so I can give the answer back to the individual, but I also felt the, the need to say, hey, why, let's.
I I don't see a problem where they can't buy a dump sticker, they gotta fill the information out.
Well, and worst.
Pay it with a check, and then if she feel, I mean, when she goes down to dump the cell tickets, she doesn't have the stuff to check on license plate.
That's right.
No shame.
Yeah, no, and worst case, worst case, the sticker becomes invalid, you know, and we tell that person they can't dump, right?
Right, well, and and there may be, and there may be some, I mean, there may be some growing pains, like, uh, uh, the number of stickers and how many stickers and all, and matching things things up that is fair, but it, uh, in light of the COVID nineteen, it would maybe even say, geez, why, why would you need to make an appointment and come in or or go go to the town hall?
Even without it, we should try to be more customer friendly.
Right, it seems to be, it seems to me, the customer focus of.
Yeah.
Pull in and it's one stop shopping, you can get your punch cards, you can pay for your sofa with a check, you can, you you, your refrigerator, you get your dump sticker, right, it just.
Even if they just. Cause I know one person was, had complained about this also, they had a dump, they had a truckload of stuff on a trailer, or a trailer full of stuff, and they couldn't dump it. Why couldn't they just gone in, waited in, let them pay it, let them dump it the one time? And then if they didn't have a dumpster, they can't come back, but at least, I mean, we're only open three days a week. And if somebody's got a load of stuff on their vehicle, a lot of times they have to use that vehicle for something else for the week.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's something like that, they know where they gotta have all the, you know, before they get there, they get.
Well, this person, I think, just had just moved into town and they had a load of stuff ongoing, they were gonna go to the dump.
Well.
And they got to the dump and they refused them, I guess.
The bottom line is, use it differently.
Is it an a- an annual fee that you pay for the dump sticker?
Well.
Seven bucks, I mean, it's not big.
Yeah.
Well, if you do it in December, it's seven bucks in December, ten dollars after the first of the year. People were saying January one, cause I got some great input that said, Cole, this time of the year, you're trying to put a sticker on, why isn't it July one to July one? I'm saying, well, maybe because it's this new year and you're seeing that, that old year until July doesn't work out that well. But it all came down to, it would be nice to be able to pull in the transfer station, and as long as you've got your checkbook, you can do your one stop.
But even with the stickers, I I agree with you, July is July, cause it would be better. So I I have to put twenty twenty one on the sticker.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not like it's not.
It's all doable.
That's right.
I.
Brought up, not looking to a con- to to fix it here, but.
Actually, that would make a lot of more sense to.
Budget wise, whatever.
There would be a budget here, yeah.
You're doing fiscal year to fiscal year, and then you've got everything, you've got your numbers, you know exactly what you're gonna have in your budget. By doing it that way.
Ask Bev with the.
Are you gonna, are you gonna?
There's probably stuff we don't know about, that that's.
Are you gonna skip six months to get it on to July, or are you gonna gain, you gonna?
I would say to be nice people to the, nice to the town people, if we're gonna do this.
We're gonna change it.
Say your sticker is good from January to June, but you have to have your new sticker in June.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I don't think, again, it's all workable.
Yeah.
But I think we owe, we owe Bev, who 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 administers the program for us, we owe her an opportunity to weigh in, too, before we make a decision.
It might even make it easier on her.
Yeah.
I mean, people are paying taxes March or May thirtieth, or May tenth. And that's, that's when you can start your discount on your, on your stickers. If they come in here to pay for your taxes, if you got a discount on your stickers, maybe they'll pick up the sticker then. You know, and it just, you pay your water and sewer in, what, July or June? So, there's a lot of options, I think.
And I only have one other item, uh, and I know I sound like a broken record when I talk Scotch Hill and potholes, but they're they're starting to open up again at the other end. I know that money's tight and everything, but I wanna get it on the radar screen that soon as we we can, that there's, there's some on the upper end that we're getting.
No, I'll let the guys know.
That's all I have.
And did I understand right on Scotch Hill that they're putting out that place right before my road that ice is over in the winter time, terrible? Um, didn't they put, they're putting a new culvert in there? Did any of you ever hit it when you least expect it? I mean, it's a dry road and then you get that stretch between the farm and.
Yeah.
Um, past McCormick's, it's just glare ice.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's dangerous.
Yeah, they're putting culverts in the morning.
I thought that's what Sam says.
It should be.
It was.
There's some lot of hurricanes on the road, I saw yesterday, the day.
It was definitely on Sam's radar, I, it may have gotten lost in translation, though.
Do we, no, Nate, no, Nate knows about this. We got culverts, culverts on the brain, we got these and then we got Roy's, too. We haven't forgotten, we're just back longer.
Yeah, his culvert got raised.
Right out of the dirt.
On Green Road, yeah.
Turn back to dump stickers. Don't we charge town of West Haven a flat rate to use their dump?
We.
Five thousand dollars, is it, is that what it is? I'm just saying, we.
Yeah.
So we charge them a flat rate and then their, their people still pay the same, you know.
Yes.
For the dumpster.
I thought it was twelve or fifteen thousand, though.
Well, whatever it is, I'm not, I don't care about the numbers, I just wanna make sure, what I'm gonna say, then why are we letting people from Hampton in there for nothing? Why don't, why aren't we charging the town of Hampton a fee for their people to come into the dumps?
I don't think Hampton should be coming in.
They are coming, I mean, that's, you go down there any Saturday, and it's all New York State cars coming down West Street.
So it's sixteen thousand in fact.
So I mean, I'm just saying, we charge one town to have the right to come in here and dump their garbage. Then if the other town is using it.
Nobody should be using it.
Well, that's what I said, but you, you go down there and you say something to somebody down there about New York State cars being in there, and you get a line of crap, so. Um, you know, and they'll say, well, he's bringing in garbage for somebody from Fairhaven, are he doing this and that? Well, it's still New York State car, and they know the guy's lives in Hampton, so. I either stop it entirely or have Hampton start paying some kind of a fee letting them in. I mean, that's just my theory, I know they're paying for their garbage, you dump it. But it's still, it's still not fair for one town to have to pay and the other, another town doesn't, especially another state town.
That might be a nice, uh, nice revenue stream to to get us a little more.
Absolutely.
Uh, uh, provided we're making money on the trash that goes out. If we're losing money per widget, that's probably not good, but, um, if if we're, if we're breaking even or or winning on trash, we should, uh, we should reach out to Hampton and see if they wanna do a contract like, like West Haven. I mean, that would be a service for their community as well.
Well, Jeff, something that was being kicked around was, um, have like a, not even reach out, just if you're, if you're in the area, feel free to dump, but we're charging you the out of town fee, which is double or two and a half times.
Yeah.
So great, if if you got a town sticker, great, you get the town rate, if you don't have a town sticker, sorry, but you gotta be charged two and a half times.
Here's, here's the rate for dumping in the other, so we have a straight.
Whatever might be the free time.
As long as it's not costing us more to get rid of them, come in.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that if one town has to do it.
Yeah.
We should not open or dump up to another town.
No, I don't disagree with it at all.
This is, this is Rod Holesworth, um, it is my understanding that garbage that, uh, is derived in another town, or especially another state, it's it's against the law to dump in Fairhaven.
It may very well be, I think now it probably would be.
I think it might be, I think you're right.
Yeah, I I I know some, a person who, well, my nephew, he 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 works in Fairhaven, he lives in Castleton. He he brought a bag of garbage, someone said, oh, you're, this is not a Fairhaven garbage, you can't dump here.
And that's the way it should be with the New York people, I think.
Sure, or or get the permit changed, but, and and have them pay, but.
Right.
You know, uh, we gotta be careful that we don't promise that they can dump and.
I understand legally doing, yeah.
Yeah.
That that's a good point.
Good point.
So you gotta check with SWAC, Joe, see what you can and can't do, right?
Yeah. Call SWAC.
You. Didn't do.
Now, I've got a complaint on Deople Street, I went down to see the police. The guy pipes water every time it rains, it floods his driveway, both sides of the road are flooded all the time. Um. I guess he's been coming to you a couple of times about it. I think it's time to go down and at least put some drainage or fill in the side of the road so the water can't lay there. He showed me where the water was the other day from this last storm we had, it was within two feet from his house. And he said, if we get a lot of rain and where the river starts to rise, it'll be under his house. So I would like to, and the potholes right in that area are so bad, it's pathetic. Um, it's just a short little street, but I think we could ditch it and get the water to run down to the river, if you wanna really get after it. But they gotta do something, this guy's fought this for two years now.
Yeah, I spoke with him a couple of times, um, we did reach out to the state to to figure out how we could, how we could get that water out of there. Um, and like I told him, it's, it's, we just can't dump the water into the river, we had permitted, which they say we can do. Um, and I did, I did, I did talk to the young man and I I went down a couple of times and it's, we're working on it as best we can, but I can't. I don't know where Main Street. But I I I can't visit.
You go around and look at all the manholes where it before was, where they can, where they were dumping.
Yeah.
Ninety percent of them dump in the river.
We can do that, but we have to, number one, we have to be permitted to do it. And number two, we actually have to buy the material to then pipe it to the river. And and I talked to the young man and said, it's not gonna be today or tomorrow.
Well, they just went down and filled the shoulders and picked the shoulders up, it helped, because to make the water run down the street instead of, instead of running in the yard. I mean, it's terrible down there, in front of that place down there, just full holes and everything else, and again, you're a taxpayer. And what else I have? I'm still upset about Mr. Hunter, and I wanna know why. He didn't sit out here when they're digging the hole instead of hiring another cop. The scheduling is terrible in the police department. And maybe you gotta look for a place to send her chief to learn how to schedule. That's all that I got. You did say that those, um, curvings was gonna put in before they pave?
We'll get it done.
Are they, are they gonna come back and fill the hole in, so it's level, the town?
I'll I'll get with Nate and make sure that everything is copacetic before.
I wasn't impressed with the way they compacted it either, can't compact with a bucket and a loader on yet.
Oh, they use the jumping jack.
Not for that, not for that great big hole, I think.
They laid some down and jumping jack, put it down, should have been.
That's what I decided, that's precise. But fill it in, because they're gonna pave here, we don't wanna dip out there.
Yeah, I'll get with Nate.
Oh, no, I don't have anything.
Jeff? You good?
Yep.
Good, um, they wanna have a June vote, or they're gonna have a June vote with the, with the, uh, school, June ninth. Um, they are looking at going to the, going to the Legion and doing, if if the weather prevents going outdoor. Drive through Penney or, much more separated, uh, so. Um, we need to know, like, well, you can talk to Suzanne, Suzanne, uh, need to know what the rules are gonna be, you know, June ninth. The back, the backup be in the, in the Legion. And can we, you know, can the Legion help it out? For that?
Legion's.
I doubt it, because they got more than ten people working in bolts.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
I don't know what they're gonna do, I, the the states involved in this, they know that they they're gonna be involved. I, I don't know how, what their, what their plan is. So the Legion is willing to first, first.
I I don't know how they're going to, what their, what their plan is. So the Legion is willing to, first, first question, they were willing to do whatever was okay. So they're willing to stay there and do what they got to do, but they just don't know what they can do.
We should push, uh, we should push the absentee ballots as hard as they can.
Yeah. But I mean, yes, but, and that's actually what's going to happen in the in the November election, too, I bet. We'll see. Uh, didn't they?
Is it legal, Bob, to just mail everyone an absentee ballot?
Not now. That's, they're, they're still, the legislature's still talking about that, and condos and the governor are at odds, and they're not, they've drawn a line in the sand, and they're not, they're not budgeting, neither of them are, are budgeting. No, because it, that's essentially mailing, that's mailing ballots, and, um, governor doesn't want it, condos is more than willing to do it.
But you don't even know who the ballot's coming from.
The target will shake.
No, but I'm saying, if anybody can fill that ballot, they'll send it back in.
I suppose that's true.
I I, my experience with absentee ballot was, I came down to pick up two, one for my wife and myself, and I said, no, you can have one, we'll mail one, two, and then that, and that, because that's person's name on on the ballot. And I'm going, cool. So if they mail them, I'm going to have to mail to individuals.
Right.
Yeah, but you can just collect all the household.
You can, you can collect other people and say, I'm going to vote for, yeah, there, if you want. Rod can still have it.
I don't know what they're going to do with this.
That's not for us to decide.
No, it's not for us to decide, just we need to know. Suzanne needs to know.
Right.
I was just wondering, sorry.
There's, you know what's going on, the dog complaint on Adam Street?
Dog complaint on Adam Street. Um, the the police went down, yeah, I have heard that's two, almost two weeks ago. I'll check in again, though.
Yeah.
Is it barking, barking, barking?
Yes.
Heard it. That post office.
Mm-hmm, yes. Yeah, and you know, um.
That's the.
Next door, the post office is going crazy.
I would tell.
Is that the same dog from before?
Not the same dog, but it's the same place.
Got it.
Um, but if you're a lean tractor, if you're short a tractor, they've got like six in the yard. In, you know, the yard that figures this room.
See if I could get one from them.
You go for it, yep.
Okay, true. All right, uh, financials, one quick question. Are we going to talk about tax bills? Or not?
They're going to wait next. Next week, this, there's so much on these next three agendas.
Yeah, not on the agenda now, so I'm just, you know, I don't know if we can bring it up on the roundtable or not.
Um, what was the question?
Tax bills. Are we going to send our tax bills out on time?
All right, um, so it is, it's a complex question. That's why I moved it to the next budget, uh, the next agenda. Um, the state has, just as a background on this for next time, uh, the state came out and said, we're not going to be able to get you your school, um, tax on time. That's August. They said you, they said they will be able to send an estimated, um, estimated number, or, and we can use that and send out a tax bill. Um, or we can wait, or we can just send out a municipal tax bill.
My feeling is, again, I think the schools can take care of it. So in this situation right here, it's not our fault that they didn't get a budget together. And I think we should send our municipal bill out and let the school look like they're on Texas.
They're not going to do that, Jerry.
Why not?
Because they can't.
What do you mean? Show me the law, Bob. Show me the law.
The law is we can.
Show me the law.
You can change the law, but you can't.
Show me the law.
It is a law.
Well, then show us.
I will.
Yeah, they can't, they can't collect the tax.
We, this is ridiculous.
I I'm with you, man. I agree.
It's our expense because they're screwed up. We have to send out another, we have to send out another tax bill. We have to send pay for the postage and everything else.
That's true, but it's not, we can't change the rule in this stream because that, that's all I'm saying.
No, I like the side, I'd like to see.
So in our next agenda, we're going, we'll be knowing more and making a decision on.
Yeah. It's, I had, I had a little packet or a little blurb written up for it. Oh, it might be actually in his packet. Yeah.
I saw, I saw.
Um, just as some information, because it's a tough decision.
Um, yeah.
And if we send it out late, then are we going to be short funded? And if we send it out early, that's going to be, because tax bills are tough to do.
Right.
It's a all hands on deck, and it's a lot of labor to do it twice.
Yeah, and the thing about sending an estimated is it can go either way. I I don't have any problems with us just sending ours out, sending the the, the national out later. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we, we can't not.
Right.
I think we, we need to send at least the municipal one out because we're, based on our checkbook, we're getting tighter.
We got bills to pay. We need money. I'm with you.
Well, we, unlike the state, we can't deficit spend.
Sure we can.
Everybody does.
It's a credit card out.
Not intentionally, though. Not intentionally.
All right. Financials?
So just double check that these numbers are are what you've got in your packet, but, uh, motion to pay the payroll, 30,335.69.
Yeah, second it.
Love your favor.
All right.
Motion to pay the general fund. And this one's big, uh, 2,227,739.13, and that's because we finally paid the school payment.
Right.
I'll second that.
Questions? All of them, Peter?
All right. And the checkbook's, uh, 244,837.28 after that payment.
It'll be hard, oh, after the payment.
Yeah.
Those are going to be real hard to pay them. Good.
Anything else?
Do we need to take a second, you know?
Would you like a motion to adjourn? I'd make a motion to adjourn, to me.
They're second. I'll second. All of them, Peter?
All right, night, everybody.